Committee to order. Chairman Scarmro is unable to attend this evening. As vice chairman, I'll be running the meeting. He had an illness in the family. He apologizes for his absence and should be here at the next scheduled meeting. Okay. Let's see. First order of business will be pledge allegiance. Bill, can you read this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Delegates and visitors. I believe we have Principal Bellastock from the high school.
We do. Mr. Chairman, what we're going to do is we technically, I'm going to ask if she can go on to academics.
Okay.
So we don't have any other delegates or visitors at that point, so you can move on to the other area if you wish.
Is there any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next order of business. To approve the minutes of September 22, 2014, for approval. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes as the minutes. Academics, high school MCAS presentation, I believe that's Principal Bellastock. You have the floor.
Excellent, excellent. I just wanted to start my presentation by thanking the school committee and with the community for their support in the past year. It's been a year of transition and lots of change. While this presentation, you'll see some high needs areas that we need to work on. You'll also see some great work that our teachers and students have been doing. We continually self-reflect on ways to improve our teaching practices and give your students the best education possible. So I just wanted to start the presentation with talking a little bit about how the state accountability report works. As you know, we're, there's five different levels and the level classification is based on cumulative PPI for all student groups and high needs groups.
Let's tell them what PPI is.
Performance and progress index. The PPI is, has to be 75 or higher for all subgroups in order for us to be classified as a level one school or district. And what is in, the indicators that are in that are CPI, which is our narrow proficiency gaps, our student growth percentile, our graduation rate, as well as our dropout rates. So those are the, how they calculate our PPI. Our high needs groups, which I meant to talk to you about, is a category that includes ELL and former ELL students. It includes our low income students and it includes our special ed students. They kind of categorize them all under high needs. So what I did here is I just wrote down the PPI for this year in the all students categories. And as you can see, where we get points awarded for our narrowing gaps, how our growth is, we get points for extra credit. An extra credit is for areas of when we reduce our warning category and if we increase our advanced category. So we get extra points earned. So the cumulative PPI takes every last four years of annual PPI and it weights it with the last year being weighted the most. Okay? So as you can see that for all students category, we met our target, above our target of 81, which 75 is what the base, the target is. So then I broke it down by our high need students. Okay? This is an area where though we did receive some extra credit points for reducing our warning and increasing our advanced categories, we did not make PPI, cumulative PPI because it was based on four years and the last, this year and the year before was weighted heavy. So we got a 69. So what that has done is it's put us into a level two category at the high school. We have to be, meet our target in both categories in order for the, for the school to be considered part of a level one category. Now, there are a lot of other categories, they could have, subgroups they could have included, but you have to have at least 50 students in each of the categories and it has to be 5% of your testing. So right now, the only subgroups we have is this high needs group, which like I said, includes ELL, low income, and student with disabilities. And actually, we've been doing very well with our cumulative PPI. I did a four-year chart here that shows for the last four years, we have been on target and above, above the 75 for an all students category, but this year and last year, we were starting to go down a little and this year, we definitely are below it.
Thank you. You want to say it?
So I wanted to start by focusing on some of our strengths, some of the wonderful things that we're doing with our students. And we have had more students moving into proficiency over the last four years. Our ELL was at 87 percent and now is at 89. And math was 79 percent and it went up to 83. And we're still above, above the state, the state average.
If I may just, what grade level? Are we at 10th grade?
I'm sorry, this is, this is more for us, it would be 10th grade in, 10th grade ELL math and 9th grade for science.
Okay.
Now, science did not really improve in any of these categories, so that's why you're not seeing it up here and you'll see later on. And I did the same thing for, for warning and failure. These kids have moved out of warning and failure. I said 5% to 2%, and 8% to 4%. So we are moving, we're moving up, which is great. And these are the, some of the categories that determine the cumulative PPI and this is the student growth percentile. And this measures student progress by comparing, you know, one student's progress against other students in the, with similar MCAS performance histories. Except for ELA, high needs in 2011 and ELA, all students in high needs in 2013, we've been consistently above or at target for the last four years. So we have a six-year target of 51 and I think we're, we're well above making that target. And this is one of the other components of the cumulative PPI. It's our composite performance index. And this is a hundred point index that, that rates the scores. So students get, in certain, certain categories, they'll get 100 points. If they're in lower categories, they get 75, all the way down to zero. So, and this is another place we've been above or on target almost years. In math, we had no change last year and no change this past year, but I'm happy to see that it's actually, it's moving back up. So that means students are actually, if they're above target, they're actually performing better on MCAS. And if they're on target, they're performing exactly what they're supposed to be in order to, to get to that proficiency target. So what I then did is I broke them, I just did some quick charts, ELA, math, and, and science. And I know this is hard to read from there, but advanced went up while our warnings and failures went down. What you're going to see in all three slides is I'm not seeing a lot of movement in the needs improvement area, which I think we really, that's, it needs to be an area of focus for us. We have our, you know, we have our students, our high performing students are doing better, but we just can't seem to be hitting that middle group, which makes me, makes me concerned. And the same thing with math. That middle, that, that needs improvement group is just not, the numbers aren't moving. So we have to figure out why. And this honestly is an area of concern. Our warning and failure numbers are still at 8%. Our advanced have also dropped. So this has been where my science department is looking at these numbers. The great thing is that we have 8th grade teachers who are now teaching 9th grade biology, which is a great opportunity for us to figure out where students are struggling, areas of weakness. And it's a great collaboration between the 8th and 9th grade teachers. I think it was one of the best things we did was put these, these two groups together. So they're actually currently looking at, they're drilling all the way down to students' questions, standards, and trying to figure out what's going on in this. And it may be because we have the 8th grade, we can maybe work more of the high school curriculum into the 8th grade so that these kids, by the time they get to 9th grade, will be prepared for this biology. It's, you know, it's one of the problems with having a biology MCAS, unlike math and ELA, it's not building upon prior curriculum. It's, it's almost like a one-shot deal for these kids. And what I have found with the biology is they don't take any more biology classes after this. So if they fail the MCAS, we have, we have to work on providing more opportunities for them to, to be able to pass it because it's not part of the science curriculum at that point. I have, I have multiple slides here, but I just kind of wanted to show, which I think is a good sign of the success we've had, the high school, is I've done the cohorts for math, ELA, and, and science. And I did it both on all students and high need students. And you're going to see in all these categories that we have seen much improvement from 8th grade to 10th grade. So in this, we've increased advanced proficiency by 27%, decreased needs improvement by eight, and decreased warning failing by 17. So, I mean, these are, these are good numbers. Okay? And even here, we've increased, for our high needs students, we've increased advanced proficiency by 20 and decreased warning failing by 33. So to me, this, this is a real reflection on what's been going on, going on at the high school. I really, and I think having the 8th grade onboard, I think we're going to see the numbers. I would love to see less of a difference, less of percentages, which tells me that, that the 8th grade is much more successful and we're pretty much in line. So I'm hoping these percentages go down, actually. ELA, skip a page here, sorry. ELA, we increased advanced proficiency by five and warning and failures went down by one. So it's not as big, as big a change, but we're still seeing, we're still seeing some change. And the ELA high needs, advanced went up 4% and increased, decreased warnings and failures by one. So definitely not as significant changes in math, but we're going to work on that. And then this is, this I thought was great. This is science, increased advanced proficient by 44% and decreased warning failure by 13. I mean, look at, we had two advanced in 8th grade and now in 9th grade, we have 49. I mean, that's, and that's one year. That's not even over a two-year span. That's, that's significant. So even though the MCAS scores in that pie graph for science still don't look like what they should be, I mean, this tells us that we're moving totally in the right direction.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Part of the difference on that would be the fact that in the 8th grade, science exam, you're dealing with three years of science that's cumulative over those three-year period. When you go to the 9th grade science, it's a biology exam.
Yeah.
So they're in biology for the year. It's a year, it's mostly a year-end exam. And so therefore, it's, it's a much stronger way of improving on that component.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. And then this last one is we increased proficiency in advanced by 39% and decreased by warning and failure by 18. So, so I think those are a lot of good things that are going on the MCAS, so I kind of want to talk about, not necessarily content information, but areas, high priority areas that I've been working with my assistant principal, the lead teachers, and we're looking and we're seeing that it's really more of our subgroups in general where, where they're struggling. Okay? The CPI is declining for the last two years in math and ELA. So that means our students are not performing as, as well.
Which students?
Oh, right, my students with disabilities.
Right.
So what I did, sorry, what I did is I, I broke them out. So this is my students with disability, high priority area. Sorry. My science CPI is declining, which means students aren't progressing on their MCAS. My dropout rate has increased, which I'm not happy about, and, but the, and the cumulative PPI is 69. So my other low, I have three other areas I'm concerned about and it's the low income students. Same thing, science is declining, my dropout rate has increased, and my CPI is not, is below 75. We've noticed a much, our ELL population has increased at the high school. We've only, we've only had small amounts of students in, in our ELL program. And it's increased from 8.9 to 16.8 in the last, the last three years. This year alone, I have probably 10 to 12 new ELL students just coming in. In fact, I get, we got three yesterday. So it's becoming a bigger population for us than it ever has been, which I think is part of the reason why we're, part of the reason why level two is we have a much bigger population. And some are coming in out of almost no English at all. Ukrainian students, I believe, and today came in. So we're getting them from everywhere, which is great. We just have to be able to support them. And what interesting thing that came out of looking at the warning failure category is I was, I did it by subgroups and I realized that students who failed MCAS were not just students with disability, but they were students with disabilities who were also low income, who also could be ELL. So we're seeing students failing who have a variety of high needs areas. So that's, that's a concern as well. They're not just a special ed student, they're not just an ELL student. They're, they're a combination of a few, few groups. And what I did here, I just showed the demographics of what our population is at the high school for the, for this high need, high needs area. Now, we certainly don't have the ELL population that, that the elementary schools have, but it's, it's definitely an area of concern for us. We want to be able to support them. So these are the areas we want to, we want to focus on. Identifying, enhancing support for our at-risk students, supporting our ELL students in classrooms, and of course, moving everybody in the subgroups. And in our, whether it's, it's all student subgroup or it's our high need subgroup, you know, move them up from failing to needs improvement, to proficient, to advanced. So this is how we're going to do it. And this is the exciting part. This is, this is the part that, that we as a school are very excited about. And I broke it down in a few different, different type of initiatives. And the first one is curriculum instruction. And our lead teachers this year are teaching four classes instead of five, which has been invaluable to, to the administration because they're able to work with the data, to work with the teachers, and to really figure out where our needs are, where our strengths are, where we need to put, to put our, put our efforts in. They have been working with each other, they're working with the teachers, they're working with us. And they've been a huge, huge help for to, you know, data analysis is, is, can be cumbersome, but because they're the content areas, they can really focus on, on what's, what's going on in their, in their content areas. We're also very involved, we have been, past few years, in the five DPs and we have more teachers going to a lot of professional development with them. And they do a lot of, you know, curriculum alignment, working with Common Core. I'm proud to say that the teachers at, at the high school have been, actually, we, we're, our curriculum is very strong and a lot of the other districts are kind of using us as a model. And we're one of the smallest schools in this five, five district partnership with the limited, the most limited amount of resources. We don't have curriculum directors, we don't have a lot yet, we don't have a lot of that. So teachers are doing this, doing this with what they have. And besides my water bubblers, incorporating the 8th grade to the high school has probably been the best thing that, that has happened. I may not want to give them back. They're really, it's, it's been amazing. They, they sit at lunch and they talk shop, they, they meet in departments once or twice, that means once or twice a week, and they're collaborating and they're excited. And they know the kids, the 8th graders know the older kids and, and it's, it's been, it's been really, really good. And I just, I think it's going to just get better. So that's been, that's been a huge, huge for us. So some of the supports we're looking for, for our at-risk students, is we're looking to do a before-school MCAS support class. The nice thing about us starting at 8:30 is we can get kids in at 7:30, so it doesn't interfere with sports and practices and rehearsals and everything else. So we're looking at first identifying who these students are, and my lead teachers are doing that, and then figuring out what's, what they need and how to do it, how to develop a curriculum, and looking at a before-school MCAS support class. Khan Academy has been used at the elementary school for a while. I mean, I as a teacher use it in my own classroom, but now with the iPads, we're looking to incorporate that into the classrooms, making it part of the, the daily routine.
You just tell them what it is.
Actually, Ryan, would you mind? Because you've been using a lot more than I. Have your school been using Khan Academy?
We have, we have.
I know, I'm putting you on the spot. You came here to support me, so.
That's okay. No, it's an intervention program, it's an online, it's a free resource. And essentially, a teacher can create classrooms, students go on there as a partnership with their families as well. They can go on and they can track how much time the students are spending on the program outside of school. They can target specific standards and they can really differentiate it for each individual student. So a student could go on there, they might have specific gaps in learning, and the teacher can assign them different standards that they need to practice. And it allows those teachers to, you know, truly differentiate as opposed to having, you know, 20 students in a classroom that have a variety of challenges and trying to, you know, teach them all at the same time. So for math, it's very effective.
It's come a long way since the homemade videos we used to do on SAT. Actually, the Khan Academy is also partnering up with College Board with the new SAT that's, that's coming out. They're, he's developing a whole, instead of, they're trying to get away from the Kaplan's and everything else and actually have free online Khan Academy type of tutoring for, for SAT, which is, which is great. So they, they've done amazing things. So we haven't incorporated to the high school, which is, yet, which is why I was going to Ryan. Odyssey, where we have used. And Odyssey, we have used as a recovery program more for summer school. We've used it during the year for, if you have seniors who need one more class to graduate, we've been allowing them to take an online class. We've been using it as our summer school program. So it's not only a credit recovery, it is a virtual high school. And what I love about it is with the pre-test, it can actually assess students' strengths and weaknesses and develop a curriculum that's individualized for that particular student, which is very good. So we'd like to use it more as part of our MCAS support. I have used it in other schools as an MCAS support and I think we can use it. Kids can do it in classrooms, they can do it at home, they could do it in the library. It's, it's a web-based program that they can access anywhere. So, so this iPad initiative is, is coming at a very good time. We're also looking at fall and spring after school. We've, we've done it in the spring for the SAT prep courses, we want to continue doing that. I don't see a problem with, with sophomores starting to look at SATs with the PSATs. I mean, I have no problem opening up the SATs and I think it would be really good to help some of our students. I think maybe more going from proficient to advanced, but it's a great, it'd be a great opportunity. As well as looking at some academic support grants that will extend, extend the school day, we're looking at that.
Right. Here's our conflict.
Okay.
You've seen it already with the 3 o'clock end time.
Yeah.
You say fall and spring after-school SAT prep courses. It conflicts. And students are then challenged, so I go to practice, which I'm expected to go at, or I go to SAT prep course, which my parents want me to go at. Is there a way we can work with coaches and say, you know what, every Monday, 3 to 4:30, there will be no practices? Or how can we do this so students can get both without being conflicted?
And then, well, that was, we did run into that and the coaches were very, very good about it, but I think students were at conflict, you know, at conflict about whether they should go to practice or not. So we, we thought about offering it even later, like after practice, but then it's, it's a long day for students. So that was a challenge this past year and I want to meet with, I'm actually going to try and get some of the kids together and the teachers and see if we, what's, what would be worse, work best.
Because we know the Saturday mornings won't work.
Oh goodness, no.
We know that it won't work.
Jim, what do you think about the 7:30 to 8:30 slot in the morning for, for the possibility of, of an SAT prep course?
Early morning, 7 to 8, or?
It would have to be redesigned because I think the way it was going now, it was two or three hours and you're doing half of English and you switch with the math. I think that's how it was.
But that was only like one day a week, right?
It was one to, was it one to two days a week?
Although it was Mondays.
It was one day a week.
I'm just thinking maybe it could be incorporated.
We'd have to change it, yeah.
But I think we can certainly look at that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just, or just come out with a blanket rule, you know, there will be no practices till 4:30 on Mondays.
Because the reason I say that is if you're going to do, if you're going to do a 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning for MCAS prep work, you can alter, you can offer an opportunity for students that want to go, who are in an advanced level, who are trying to improve upon their SAT level at that same time as well.
Yes.
And it may be able to be a little more consistent where it's not as encumbrancing as a three-hour course, you know, where I take a break here or there. So it's something we should certainly take a look at.
What's been interesting is that the students are in this building at 7:30 or earlier now, which I like it because they're not so much in the late line. But we have, we have students in this building a lot earlier than, because we're later, so it's not as early for them. So we're, we're trying to use that pocket of time for meetings and, and things like this. And we'd like to get creative in it. We might as well, might as well take a use of that hour while we have it.
Yeah, that I would.
No, absolutely.
See, I, I like the idea of the three-hour block, if it can be done, if we can just meet with the athletic director. I think you get more of an impact. I know it's, kind of trying to squeeze it in, but I think the SAT prep course is a lot more important than the practice. So I think if we can find a way to make it work, great, but I like that three-hour block because I think that, you know, it's, it's a very important class and I think the hour and a half just doesn't, doesn't do it.
What students were doing, I noticed, is they would all, they would alternate, they would, they would, they may come to SAT one week and then not come the other. Well, they're not getting the full benefit of the course, but they felt like they were at least getting some benefit. So a lot of them were, were doing that. So if they had a game on a Monday night, that would, that would be a situation where...
I, I get it, but I just want to see it.
No, I...
I want them to get the full impact of that SAT prep so we can start improving on our SAT scores. I get, I totally agree with you that somehow, some way, we have to come up with a hard and fast rule that this three-hour block, there are no, you know, there's, there's a pass for these, these students that...
Absolutely.
You're there at the SAT prep if you choose to and there's no ramifications.
I would think academics, we should never have any ramifications with...
Exactly, that's my point.
With sports anyways, but, yeah, I also like to reach out, I'd like to meet with, with the teachers and some of the students to see, is a three hours too long? I also think three hours is a long block. Is it long enough? Is it not long enough? And, you know, would a Saturday once a month, would they come for a Saturday once a month? Especially when they try, want to try and do the practice SATs and things like that. So, so I have to kind of, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, just waiting for, because the Saturdays seem to be a, seem to be a good open spot for us, even without athletics and all of that too. So we might be able to take a look. Right? But we could certainly look at that.
When you say fall and spring, are, would the same student go to fall and spring or would they choose fall or spring?
They would probably choose fall or spring. In the fall, usually who's taking the SATs is seniors. A lot of students like to take it in the fall because they want to take it in March. So, which, which I think is early, but they, if they take it like, we haven't even started yet, so it probably wouldn't start till November at this point, which is very, which is a lot closer than to March. They don't want to wait till April, especially if they want to take the March ones, so.
And is it like a six or an eight-week course?
I believe it's an eight-week, eight weeks course and it was, yeah.
Was there a fee?
There was a fee, a hundred.
A hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, right.
And we paid the teachers out of that.
And the teachers are ready to go on this, so we're just, just...
Coming up the schedule.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the last initiative, which actually one of our last initiatives, is, is really what we're excited about the high school. My capos has been doing a lot of work with these CET about more co-teaching classes. You know, we want to create a more, you know, inclusive education, less restrictive environment. We're finding we have students who are, are in small group that really are not being challenged. They really are the higher end, and, and what's happening is they're, they're not being challenged. You know, more consistent curriculum if, if it's two teachers in the room, more, more opportunities for differentiation. We have three classes this year that we're doing, environmental, algebra I and English IX. So we're looking to train, train more teachers on, on good co-teaching. Because co-teaching is not, if it's done well, it's done well, if it's not, it's, it's not. But so far, it's worked out well this year. We have some really good new special ed teachers who are working very well with, with the general ed teachers. And get away from that small group environment and get more of a, you know, environment where everybody's learning. You have students with disabilities in the same classes with students who are not. So that's, that's been a big push for us. And what I think it does is it just, it allows us an opportunity to make sure that everybody's getting the same education. Everybody, and when there's two teachers in the classroom, working with kids, that's much more support. We don't want an ESP... We don't want an ESP in a teacher environment. We want two teachers that you can't tell who's a special ed teacher and who's the, who's the general ed teacher. And I've seen it work well. For me, and Mrs. Grummer asked me this morning about this, what can, what can, what can the community do for us is provide these professional development opportunities for our teachers, so we can get them out there, get them, you know, learning about differentiation in the classroom, get them learning about co-teaching environments, get them learning how to incorporate, you know, even more of the technology that we have now into the classrooms. So that, that would be a big push for us, is educating the teachers. We can do it in our few PD days, but these teachers really need to be out there collaborating with other teachers and really training them if this is the direction we want them to go in. And our last one is our iPad initiative, which is just taking off. What, me, there's this full whatever, and four big benefits of this iPad initiative, and it can personalize learning. It can allow us to be able to work with students. Students can actually use a technology and not use a technology. You can, you can go onto apps and websites that are particularly designed for their particular area of weakness or strength. It provides for small group learning where students can work together in small groups, and teachers can facilitate, which I'm big on teachers facilitating the learning as opposed to lecturing. I think students learn from learning and not by being, being lectured to. It allows us to differentiate in the classrooms. You know, you have, we have, I've taught in classrooms where I have students who are bored out of their mind because they're bored. They've learned the material, they've mastered it, they want to do something else. And then I have other students who are not engaged because they're struggling, and they, and the problem is that sometimes a teacher sometimes can't get to everyone. So this, the iPad can allow, you can differentiate in the classroom with the iPad. You can allow students who want to challenge themselves to work on other programs and things online that is going to challenge them and get them ready for the next, for the next lesson. And you can also work with students who need more reinforcement of the lesson they just had, of the lesson they had yesterday. Adaptive technology is a great piece of this, is, you know, speech to text and text to speech and, you know, large print, audio, lots of things that even our regular ed students, non-desirable high needs students can benefit from. So I, all these are win-wins for me, absolutely. And our teachers are ready, ready and anxious to go forward with all the initiatives, whether it's the co-teaching, the iPad, the M-CAS prep, or the, or the SATs. So we've got a lot of, a lot of exciting things going on. What we feel here is that the most important thing we need to do is identify who these students are and design a program that's going to make them successful. And, you know, more personalized education we should be doing. And that's it.
I just had a couple of quick questions, unless anybody has any other questions. I just wanted to see, will the before-school M-CAS support classes, will that be open to every student that is interested, or is it just going to be for your high-need students?
What we have done, I have been in other schools, is you tend to target those kids. You invite them, you send letters home, you try and get the parents in. It's always open to every student. But the trick is, and usually some of the students who are struggling, and the M-CAS are struggling in school as well, and they don't want to be here any longer than they have to, and those are the students that are usually the most difficult to get in here. So those ones we'd be targeting, but it would be open to anybody, absolutely.
Thank you. I just had one more question. I know we've had a high turnover rate as far as personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that's had any effect? I mean, we're losing mentors, like some veteran teachers to other positions, other places. Have we done exit interviews and come up with any information that'd be helpful on this?
A lot of our teachers, I went through this the other day of who, who has moved on, and it's been a variety of reasons. There's not any, I mean, it's been, it's been income, it's been career changes, it's been lifestyle changes, it's, you know, in some situations, it's been student, teachers of less because it's been not a good, good fit for them here or whatever. But there hasn't been any one particular indicator that's, that I could pinpoint. I think we've got a lot of great new teachers. I'm really excited about seeing the work they're doing, and, you know, it's, they're excited, they want to be here. They're, they're, they love in the building, they're loving having the eighth grade here, so I don't see that as being, being a concern.
I would, I would say, though, that what I would add on is that the curriculum meeting this morning, it's a very good comment that Mr. Harity had brought up, and one of the things that we have to continue to work on is the recruitment of bringing these people in and keeping them here.
Yeah, I guess that's my...
That's the key. It's the key of keeping them here as part of, you know, the incentive of why, you know, if they're doing such great work, why are we losing them? Or are we losing them for reasons other than that?
We lose a lot of quality teachers. I've seen a lot of them move on, and it's sad. I'd just, I'd just like to make sure that we're truly utilizing that exit interview to see what we can do to retain them.
If I can, and just to bring an article that was in the Globe North last night, or yesterday, it gave a quick view of average salaries across the state. And they did North Shore, and they compared it. And right now, Winthrop sits just above Melrose. We are at fifty-seven, I think, eight for average salaries across the state. Melrose is lower than us, and they're fifty-four thousand dollars. But we have to also know that there are cities, schools across the state, that the average teacher, not the high salary, but the average teacher can be as high as ninety-four and ninety-five. And they were given, I don't have the stats for vocational schools or charter schools, but we have schools like Dover Shearborn, who, though they're a regional school, have a salary of ninety-six and ninety-seven thousand dollars as an average score. So that's one of the indications as to why we struggle to attain and retain. At one time, a majority of our teachers, almost as close as eighty-nine percent, lived in our town. So when we offered somewhat less salary, at least there wasn't transportation, the children were close at hand, so those made up those differences. But right now, I believe, and this is my quick figuring, I believe right now we only have something like fifty-eight percent of our teachers and staff actually live in our town. So that's a significant difference when they now need to travel outside. So it's just, there's no quick fix. I realize that. But as long as we are looking that that's where there needs to be some change and a new direction.
I know when I was hiring, that salary was, was, was an issue. I had some amazing candidates that were making at least twenty thousand dollars. I couldn't even, I couldn't even touch some.
Yeah.
Now, the new building might be a nice enticement in a couple of years for some of these teachers as well, but that was definitely an obstacle in hiring this summer.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you saying that the exit interviews indicated that salary was a big part of why people were leaving? Or you said there was a variety of reasons?
It was, was a factor for some teachers. Like I said, some teachers went to Rome to teach, one, two, two made career changes, complete career changes. Some just, yeah.
Interesting. There were three major reasons why teachers left this past summer. One was, A, there was relocation. That was a big, you know, for some folks. The other was salary. There was no question about it. They had an opportunity to go to another district where they could get increased. In some areas, it was a significant increase. And then the other was they just either just wanted a change. You know, it was, was pretty simple in that sense.
So a variety of reasons played a role.
But, but, you know, and that's, and that's what you have, and now, and those were what we were given. Whether or not, you know, all of those are true factors, we just have to trust what we're told on that.
Back to the presentation.
Sure.
When we get results like this, and let's say the math was low, we seem to pour resources into math, and then we watch the ELA, or in this case, science drop off. And I know that's your role now is to try to balance that. When Mr. Penn brought up the M-CAS in the morning, you know, the kids that you targeted, it seems like it's great we're targeting those kids, but now we're going to drop off with the advanced and proficient students that want to come in, but when it's saying, well, we don't need you to come in, we're going to work with. Is there a way we can set up and make a mentoring program? Like you said, a lot of kids are coming in early, so why not utilize some of the kids and say, you know what, we're going to put together a math or an ELA or a science biology. Who wants to be the mentors? And that way, you get those kids in who are enthusiastic to come in and mentor. And that way, they get involved, and you get all subgroups involved. So, and I know now you've got to balance resources with addressing all the, you know, the areas. It's your way also to hook up with the coming school, you know, the sixth, seventh grade teachers and say, actually, this is what we need our eighth graders to be able to do. You know, we talked about the team leads and curriculum directors and, you know, now eight through twelve, but can we get like the seventh and maybe the sixth grade teachers on board? Say, you know what, you have these PD sessions, why not bring in some, connect with the seventh graders, try to open up an afternoon, invite them over, and say, you know what, this is what we really need you to work on, and then we can take it from there. Call it scaffolding or continuum, what is the term that Dr. Jenkins always used, it was a favorite term of mine, I can't think of it from life for me. But when you're connecting from school to school to school.
Vertical.
Vertical, that's it, thank you. I haven't heard that in a long time. But if, you know, now that we're a little smaller, we've gone to three buildings from four, that if we can start, tell the, no, the grade below, you know what, this is what we need our students to come in with. And if every grade looks below that grade and say, you know what, this is what we need you to do, and start that curriculum mapping, and let's start it that way and get some direction in.
And it can also, can also work the other way, because I, I did this in Franklin, is we're having problems, our, our students are coming in algebra two as freshmen, but they were, they weren't doing well, and we couldn't figure it out. And they always said, well, the eighth grader's teachers aren't teaching what they're supposed to. But what we did is we brought them all together and realized the eighth grade standards are very different than the high school standards, and there were gaps, and, but it was because of M-CAS and state standards. And what the ninth graders, teachers were able to supplement the curriculum at the ninth grade level for what they weren't getting at the eighth grade level. So my thing is it may not be anything they're not doing, it's maybe just part of the standards and the M-CAS that they're not getting certain topics that they need in high school, but then the high school can actually find ways to supplement it. So it goes, it goes both ways, and it's really effective if you can get teachers together and collaborating like that. I agree. I think it's a great idea.
And unless the dropout rate, this was a big effort on Gail Collins' part, was to lower the dropout rate.
Yep.
And I applaud her for that. Why? And now, let me proceed that, special needs can stay in the school system till, what, nineteen or twenty-one?
Twenty-two.
To twenty-two. So if someone's twenty, twenty-one, and says, you know what, I'm kind of done here, are they considered to drop, you know, are they dropping out, even though they may have been in the school system for six, seven, eight years? I'm just curious how, if that number factors in.
What, what happens on that?
Yeah.
Right. I'm not sure after, if they're of age, that that affects us, unless they haven't graduated yet to the point where they haven't gotten either a diploma or the M-CAS alternate. However, what will happen, and this happens in a lot of communities, is we will have students that move into the community, and they'll come in, and they'll come to school for a little while, and then they just drop out. They don't want to be here, or they, you know, and we live with that data that comes and goes. Or you have students that go, sometimes what happens is a student will be in the ninth grade with this grade level, but may not make it to graduate by with the senior level, so that the class that they're supposed to graduate with, they don't graduate with that class, but they graduate with the class below, but they're considered that they didn't make it with that grade level, so therefore, it's, it's a dropout, that number goes off. So it's, it's a really wacky kind of formula. Our goal is that we, we, we have, we're getting penalized now if kids don't come to school, or if they drop out. So our job is to make sure that we keep them in school, we retain them, we do everything that we can to educate them, to figure out other alternatives for them to go to school, whether it's the Odysseyware, you know, the program, whether it's a different type of program that we'd send them over, to a different type of school. And that's, those are the, those are the difficulties that we do face.
And I can imagine the situations, the scenarios, but let's say an international student comes for a year and a half and then leaves, is that considered a dropout?
They can only stay for a year.
Right.
So...
So it would not be, if they're here for a year, if they're here for the year, they wouldn't be considered in that area, because it's, they're here for, as, they're marked in the system differently.
Yeah.
Than what the student would be if they were being enrolled into our system, because we don't get, when, when an international student comes in here, they pay upfront to come to school here, they're not recorded as a student that goes on our, our record at the end of the year with the chapter seventy funding, because they're saying that you've, that student's not a permanent student.
Do they take the M-CAS?
They do, they take M-CAS.
They do if they want to graduate.
If they want to graduate.
I know some of them come in only for three months. They come in September and they leave in December.
Yeah.
Is that a dropout?
No.
No.
It's transfer.
Yeah.
It's transfer in, transfer out.
Yeah.
And that was an issue with Yale, saying kids would transfer out, but Winthrop never got documentation of where they transferred into.
That's, that's another point.
And without that, it was going to say they're dropout, because we didn't know where they went.
We, I've given diplomas out over the summer for two to three students that just needed one more course or to need, needed to finish one more course, and Odysseyware was, was huge. We had, huge for that. And I'm pretty proud of these kids, they didn't give up, and they, they did what they needed to do over the summertime, and I was able to give them their diploma. So we do have, we do have things in place for these kids, and we have been, this past year, we have met with every, every senior at risk, met with their parents, come up with a plan for the year, and I would, I confidently say that less kids probably, more kids probably graduated because the guidance department was working with the parents on a plan to make sure that they graduated. There was still, there was a few, but like I said, I've been giving out diplomas all summer, it's been, it was great. So we're, we're, we want them all to graduate. There are some students who, you know, at nineteen, twenty, think, they have two more years of school that they're never going to finish, and they are going to get their GED at some point, so, and that, so.
All right, thank you.
I was kind of hanging on the point of the biology scores being low because they're just introduced to it that one year.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if there was a way to, from the middle school, and you guys are connecting, which is great, is there a way to embed a little bit of the biology in a health class or anything, you know, in the middle school, like Mr. Holden was saying, maybe to introduce it here and there, you know, before, is it tenth grade they take the biology?
They take it at ninth grade, actually, yeah.
So, you know, if there's any way to embed it in a couple of years in another course, whether it be health or physical education or anything like that.
We believe that when you look at, when, when you see Ryan's presentation in two weeks, you'll see that the, what's interesting is that the science scores, we've received a lot of extra credit on, because our kids at the, at the younger levels have been improving on that. And one of the questions today was asked was, what's going on there? Why is that happening? And we're doing some programs with the scientists coming in to teach science, which is twice a month, that's coming on, working with every class, that's helping and incorporating on that. Last year, the improved, the position of returning that position, of the STEM position, was very helpful at the middle school level. That has now been incorporated where the, the teacher who's teaching it over with grades four through seven is not just teaching with herself the class, she's incorporating in team teaching with each classroom teacher. So we're trying to build that basis of that, that love for science, that hands-on, and we're seeing extra credit points come our way, because we're seeing a lot of growth in the science area at the lower levels. And I think we're going to see that as we come up. So part of that work that they will do together on that is to, is to continue that, you know, that marriage, to make it work. that marriage, to make it work.
Just one more thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more thing. So, I wanted to, of course, talk about MCAS, but just related to the, the turnover and the exit interviews and job satisfaction, the superintendent and I had spoke briefly once about maybe doing job satisfaction surveys throughout the year.
Right.
Before a staff member might come to a point where they're handing in their notice, which could be helpful to collect some data at different points in the year. And I, I know that our, our mean income or salaries are on the very low end, very low end, but in some research studies, support and supervision are rated higher than salary for job satisfaction. So, if we're not able to meet people's needs financially, we certainly need to be meeting their needs in terms of support and supervision and that may come through continuing ed courses that become available or, you know, allowing lead teachers to get together for an extra period, you know, have, giving them four classes instead of five, things like that. So, things like that are very important to educators as well as, you know, the paycheck.
Mr. Paines, if I may add, I had a, I received an email, and I'll keep the name off, but I received an email from a teacher who left us this past year to go to another community and that was primarily for the amount of money that was, you know, there was an increase of about $12,000 to $14,000 difference. And this person emailed me and said that she wants to feel like this is her year abroad and hope that the opportunity would come to come back because she never felt such a supportive group in working and misses that support and the stuff that happens and hopefully that something will happen in that area. And I was happy to see that because I think that that's the one area that we do try to strive on, to build, and I'm not sure we see that, you know, when we're in our own little worlds here and you go off to a different district, you don't, you, you see how they run things and, you know, we are small enough that we should be able to be supportive and working on those areas. Now, I'm not saying that that's true for everybody, but it was just a very powerful email that I happened to receive on that that showed me some evidence that that has occurred.
We're getting creative with our, we lost our, our morning on Thursday morning, so we're getting very creative about our meeting times and every other week our eighth grade teachers meet, so they, they meet as a team. We have our mentor-mentorities meeting every other week. We have department time every week, so, we have it in the morning now. So, we're trying to find pockets of time. I have been meeting, in the process of meeting with every teacher in the building and that's going to be my thing. And it's amazing having 20 minutes one-on-one with a teacher has been huge for me this year. So, I think as long as we can support them, provide professional development, provide the, I think one of the biggest things that I've heard teachers say is not enough time to collaborate, not enough time to talk to each other. And so, we're trying to find creatively pockets of time that these teachers can actually meet. They don't want to sit through a faculty meeting with me, they want to meet with each other. So, we're working on it.
One of the initiatives that we've done as a district this year too is in the professional development. We finally have brought back our committee, the professional development committee that's in the contract and we, we, this, Borajan and I have selected that committee based on the folks who wanted to be a part of that committee. What that committee is going to do though is now teachers can, we're bringing back a program that I think was once here in, in Winthrop, but it's a teachers teaching teachers program. And so, the teachers, and then these programs will be selected from the PD committee, those teachers who put in a syllabus, say this is the program that they would like to teach. Other teachers can take that course, they'll receive PDPs, the teachers who are teaching it will receive compensation for that out of the professional development. And it's a way of having teachers who teach their strength to other teachers because they want to learn and it's a good opportunity, plus this is the professional development that they're seeking. A lot of times, you know, they may say to us, well, that's good, that professional development, but I really need this. Well, now's an opportunity for them to get this at a much better rate and a cost for everybody.
If I can just revert back to Bill's question on the dropout rate. This past year, and we're going to continue to discuss it, about reinventing or reintroducing an alternative program at the high school, identifying students at risk is not just academic reasons, there's also behavioral and social reasons that are tagged along with our children who are not successful in their academics. So, we are trying to develop some form of an alternative program and hopefully we can get it maybe up on its feet. Of course, we're talking about increased funding to provide for this program and, but I, I personally have high hopes that we will go in that direction and it will be completed and that will also help our academics as well as the other areas that our students struggle, they struggle.
Can I add to that? One of the other things that's important is that part of that alternative program would also return students to our school that we want. Because when those students are taking MCAS exams, those MCAS exams still affect our schools even though they're not taking them with our, we haven't taught them, they're taking them at the school that they're at and what's the accountability there? It's not, there's no accountability on them, the accountability comes back to us. So, if we're able to, to create that type of program that will work, the way I look at the investment on that type of program is let's go back a few years ago when the school committee invested on putting a full day kindergarten into the school and they took that one-year payment and said, we've got to do this in order to get that money to come back in the Chapter 70. And that's something that we are taking a look at for future to say, we have to do this, this is what that upfront money's going to cost us, but then that should now become part of the, you know, the regular budget that will come in with the Chapter 70 as well. Because we won't be paying that money out, it should be staying with them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bellistock.
Thank you.
Can, can we get a copy of that presentation?
Yes, yep. I'll email it.
A hard copy would be good on the, on the next few, just because it's, it's difficult to, you know, just to have it.
Yeah, we didn't, she, she was working right up until the fact that we did it.
Oh, no, I understand.
And I, and I wanted to make sure, but we will also put that online, we'll put it online for the...
Absolutely.
If you can send that to, if you can send that to Ms. Paines, she'll be glad to put that online.
Okay, absolutely. I need to make copies for everybody, too.
And then we'll make sure that if anybody wants a copy, we can email, but it will be online.
But thank you so much.
And if you have more questions, I have more graphs.
And Mr. Harried, if we could have your copy before the agenda meeting in, in October, that would be great. It's usually the week before the October 20th, so probably October 15th.
Well, that's Columbus Day.
14th, next Tuesday. That'll be the agenda meeting. Thank you.
Moving on, subcommittee reports curriculum. Mary Al Shaki?
Yep. We actually had our curriculum meeting this morning. In attendance were John Mosero, Superintendent of Schools, Karen Chavez, Citizen Finance Committee, Barbara Flavin, our Citizen and also Finance Committee, Eileen Bellistock, our High School Principal, Ryan Harriedy, our Cummings School Principal, Eileen Pearson, our Gorman School Principal, Gary Scarmel as a Citizen, and myself. As you've heard, our main discussion, our agenda was our MCAS scores for spring of We started with Eileen Pearson who broke down our schools, our scores in the third grade in three categories and they were for all students, low-income students, and special ed slash disability students. The explanation for the division in that MCAS scores, besides scoring for correctness, also looked to see how those three groups perform as a whole in each school system. Ms. Pearson also grouped, which was interesting to see and easier for us to see a little bit clearer, she divided them into advanced and proficient together as well as needs improving, improvement and warning. By grouping, there was a clear understanding as how the scores portrayed themselves. I'm not going over any of these specific scores, just the generality. And under all students, ELA, there was improvement evident but below target. In math, the same, improvement evident but below target. The low income for ELA was a slight decrease in the CPA and the CPA stands for Composite Performance Indicator. The math, also a slight decrease. In special ed, they went down very slightly in CPA, there was a slight improvement in math in CPI and overall, Ms. Pearson, as far as support and what she would like to change, one indication is she would like to go and change the MAES assessment to SRI, which would align itself with Mr. Harriedy and what they do in the Cummings. And that way, both of our buildings are doing, using the same mode to assess our students. Also, her students created their own, I'm sorry, their teachers created their own assessment of the scores and created a chart on the areas that need to be focused on and they targeted a, areas of comprehension, vocabulary, and in math, fractions. Ryan Harriedy reported the MCAS scores for the Cummings School. Mr. Harriedy also grouped his students in the three categories, all students, low-income, and students with special needs and disability. Mr. Harriedy used a rainbow chart to color code areas of above target, on target, improved target, improved, I'm sorry, improved below target, no change, and declined. For all students, the CPI in ELA indicated no change. The CPI in math indicated no change and the CPI in science and technology indicated no change. For low-income, ELA, no change, math, no change, science declined. In special ed, there was no change in ELA. In math, there was an improved but still below target and in sciences, what Mr. Mosero was talking about, it is above target. Mr. Harriedy also had areas for helping his students to attain stronger and better scores and like he said during our meeting, he emphasized how hard his teachers work and they, even though we as a community are not seeing raised MCAS scores, it's just as disappointing to his teachers that they're not seeing a change and increase in the scores. He indicated that he's using Khan Academy and he has 22 in one group and I believe 24 in another group of students. He also talked about an ICE block. At the end of the day, an ICE block stands for Intervention Challenge Explorer to support those children. And as Mr. Mosero mentioned also, that this year or last year, they had the Science Scientist Grant Program that really got our students involved, there was labs involved, so the kids actually got hands-on learning besides just looking and reading their books or interaction. And Mr. Harriedy, not Ryan, of course, also would like to continue to re, to institute that program, but as he said, it's, he believes close to $20,000 to keep that program alive and so therefore he's also looking at academic support grants that will at least shave off some of the costs of that particular program. And as we see, Eileen Bellistock reported the high school scores, again, the same thing divided into three categories. As Eileen said, in the category of all students, we continue to meet our target and above within 81. The area of concern was that we went from a Level 1 to a Level 2. Ms. Bellistock explained that we continued to score well in all areas, but did not show enough growth in the area of special needs, low-income and ELL or our high needs. The support, as she already spoke about on her presentation, was first to identify those at-risk students, to create before-school programs in MCAS, the use of the Odyssey Computer Program, not just in the summer, but throughout the whole year for those students who that would give them some advantages. Also, the creation of academic support groups, grants, and allowing lead teachers to teach one last class, to develop focus areas that students need to increase their learning. So, and there were no votes taken and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on, superintendent's report.
I'm just going to add on to her report. By the way, that was an excellent report, Ms. Shaki.
Okay.
The, just so that everybody is aware, that on the October 20th meeting, Mr. Harriedy will be doing a presentation with the Arthur T. Cummings, grades four through seven. And on the November 3rd meeting, Ms. Pearson will be here to give the breakdown of grade three. This is the first year that the William P. Gorman will actually be doing the MCAS because we have reconfigured our school so that with the state now, we had to go in and do a whole different accountability. So, our schools now are K through 3, 4 through 7, and an 8 through 12, which is unique. There's not many communities, if, and I'm not sure how many there are actually, that are, have that type of configuration that we do, which will change some of the dynamics of how the accountability will work at the end of the year. I'm not sure how it will change our PPI, they may just try to figure it out by grade. However, the, the William P. Gorman School will be, for the first time, will now have an opportunity to be, give it, at the end of the year, they will now have a level, whereas right now, they do not have a level because they're not applicable. If you recall in the old system that they used to have with the CPI system, the William P. Gorman used to be classified as a school in needs because the Cummings School was the great, the MCAS scores there were not at the proficient level. And so, what would happen there is that they wouldn't give it to the other school. Now, they don't do that, it's, it's by the school. But in any event, I think that that's important, that folks understand that. And also, what's important is, Ms. Pearson may not have showed it today, but she is thrilled and very excited to have this opportunity to showcase what the students have done within that building. She also feels that that transition will be less harrowing on students from a second to third grade and now she's got them in that third grade to really get them prepared on that. So, so I just wanted to let everybody know that on the November 3rd will be the, Ms. Pearson with grade 3 and on the October 20th will be Mr. Harriedy, who will be presenting on the Arthur T. Cummings. The iPads were passed out last week. We, we did it. I will say that, it was a, to pass out 712 iPads, I want to give Mr. Ruwako, Mr. Reardon, Mr. Sacco, who is our new tech ed specialist, as well as Ms. Hames, Ms. Eccles, Ms...
Bono.
Ms. Bono, yes, and Ms. Suma, who were here giving up, they, they worked that evening for us, and then Ms. Bellistock, Mr. Crombie, and myself. There was no better joy than giving a student an iPad, watching the faces of not only the students, I have to say, but watching the faces of parents, especially, you know, families that were coming in who had multiple children in that family and all of a sudden, the, the sixth grader's going, where's mine? It wasn't there to be that night. However, what I felt that night, and I, and I have to compliment the school committee, I really do, I have to thank you and, and the community needs to thank you as well for allowing this initiative to happen. Because what we saw that night was students who would never, right now in my estimation, ever, some of these students would never be able to afford a tool like this, who have that tool. But more importantly, there's a respect factor that comes out. Our students are feeling the sense that, you know what? The, the staff, the, the district is respecting us by giving us this tool, they're allowing us and they're saying that this is going to help us and we want, we want to in return show that respect. And I think that, I think we're going to see that. And so, I was happy about that. We do have those students who have yet to get them, they, there is an open house this Wednesday evening for the high school, which I'm also thrilled to have that happening because it's the first time in many years that we've had a curriculum night at Winthrop High School and that's going to be important for families to come and meet with the teachers. But for those families who have yet to pick up the iPad, we will be distributing those on Wednesday for those students. If you choose that you do not want an iPad, there is a form that you fill out to say that you're going to use the current iPad that you have and that is fine. I apologize for the mishap on the cases. The cases are in, there was, the cases were supposed to go home, they were supposed to go home, they were supposed to be here when we passed them out, but that didn't happen, they were backordered. Then they weren't delivered, the problem was they mixed up the area code and they would, not a zip code, not the area code, the zip code, and they were delivered to the Berkshires last Thursday because it was a miscommunication of a two. They finally came here on Friday, so those are going to be taken care of this Wednesday in the cafeteria, they will be given out. And I said to parents and I, and I will say this again, absolutely do not, you do not have to bring your iPad in until you've gotten that case. I mean, we're going to make sure that that case gets to you, they will be a good, strong case for the students and we are very appreciative. Some parents have asked me, but if I buy them a case, is it okay if they have their own case? That's fine. You know, we, but we want you to know that we were going to provide that for you because some students prefer to have a case and a keyboard with it. We're not, we're not providing a keyboard... We're not, we're not providing a keyboard with it, but that's entirely up to the students on that. So, we're excited that that has now been passed out, and we're moving forward into the other area. But let us not forget about technology in the lower levels of school, too. And now, we, we believe that what we will see is the usage of the computers that we will not have to have up here because of the iPad. We will be able to take those computers as well, and deploy them down, and relocate them to the Cummings and to the William P. Gorman School. Note that the 14th and the 15th of October, we're finally going to have the Cummings School have the smart, uh, technology, uh, machine projectors will be all placed into the classrooms, um, as well as the gift, if you recall, and I know that tonight, we, at the last meeting, that I talked about that gift that we had gotten for $10,000. We have to officially approve that gift, and gosh, I hope you do, because we've already purchased a whole set of Chromebooks for the Cummings School that we are utilizing for Khan Academy, various things that are happening within the classroom. Um, at the William P. Gorman School, we have purchased all what they call MOBs, and these are document cameras that work, um, incredible. Uh, the, the, um, the lens on them, the eye, I mean, you can take any document, put it anywhere in the classroom, put it right up there, and it goes right up onto the board. The teachers are very excited about having this technology and working with that. So, these are the things that we realize we want, we need to get that technology flowing all the way K through 12. So, the, there is our first, our first student production will be happening this Thursday and Friday night at Winthrop High School. The student production is also an independent study, so we're very excited about the potential there. It is on, I believe, the timeframe for this court, this production is at six o'clock. It'll be our first production in the new high school auditorium, uh, since we revamped it. So, Mr. Mazzone, Michael Mazzone is, is the student director. We wish him luck, as they say in the theater world, break a leg. And, um, just so people know what break a leg really means in that, it means that the curtains on the stage is a leg. That's what those legs are. And when they say break a leg, they mean you break that leg and you go onstage. So, not really physically. Um, anyway, I knew you were all thinking that, so I had to interrupt that. The, the, um, moving on to School Building Assistance Committee. Right now, as you've noticed, you may, when you see the project, the project is on schedule. Um, I know, right now, it's, it's getting higher and higher down there. If you always take a look at the Cross Street side, over towards the Payson Street side, you will see that the Cross Street side is usually about two weeks ahead of the Payson Street side. And they have strategically have done that purposely, so that they can continue to go to the next stage of the project. What we're into the project right now is the geopiers, there's 1,800 geopiers being drilled, uh, down, and that should conclude by the middle of October, within the next two weeks. Uh, and I think if you look at the Cross Street side, it's pretty much concluded on that. And it's now that, and the, the, um, what do you call, the, uh, the surface has...
Elevation.
Yeah, it has grown to 15.2 feet. Uh, so, we've, we've talked about a three-story building, it's probably going to be more like a four-story when you get that, that elevation is complete. But what's happening there now is that they will begin, by the end of this month, the foundation will begin, and you will see by, by the end of December, the foundation should be completed. And, um, so we're, we're making progress on that, and, uh, very, very pleased. People in the community have stopped me, uh, people I don't know, just telling me how excited they are to see that the project is moving, and it's moving, you know, nicely, and let's hope that that continues. And, um, they're getting excited to see each different stage, so. Uh, and, let's see, reconfiguration, MCAS, spring, school building, CI. I talked about grade three. What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is, if I may, just go into Personnel, if, if there's no questions, okay.
A couple of things. I think it's been taken care of, but I see it's on the, uh, the Weekly Report for Gorman Fort Worth. Thanks. The projectors?
Yes, they're all set.
Okay, I believe they were, but I'm still sorry here. Um, crossing guards?
Yes, I've posted, we've, we've continued to post. I think I've got a bite on one person, and we're working hard to do it, because we've, we've, we know where the four places that they were going to be at, and so we've posted for three.
And last thing, uh, Mr. Harriedy's here, maybe he can help out. I'm a little concerned, as parents have called me, that Cummings School is going to put on some kind of drama production, and they were going to have 20, 25 kids and charge them $100 each. This is what I'm hearing. Then they expanded it to allow any kid that wanted to participate, and it might be up to 100, but they're still charging $100 per kid.
It's the user fee for the middle school, high school. It's the same user fee that we charge for, they can do, um, what do you call, uh, intermural...
It's an activity fee.
It's an activity fee. It's an activity fee that they pay. They would, they paid it when they were at the middle school last year.
So it's only for seventh graders?
It's, well, we did sixth, we, last year, we had sixth and seventh. And so the question was, do you, if you're going to incorporate it to fourth through seven, it should really be the same as, uh, it's, because it's a middle school. If he's going to incorporate the fourth through seven, we should be charging everybody that activity fee. So, that's...
All right, because I'm getting the impression that it's going toward the drama production.
No, 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 no. The $100 goes towards the activity fee that we have, that pays for the stipends. But it's not going towards the production.
All right, so it's, it's the activity fee?
Right, it's the activity.
For the sixth and seventh graders?
Right, that they can do, they can participate in intermural sports.
Which, do we have that program?
We do.
We do, it starts Wednesday.
Okay.
Uh, they can, they, we actually added, we, we've been able to bring back the middle school call program now. Uh, we have the middle school drama program. And I think that's usually the only three or four, the MAE Student Councils. We have four areas that kids can participate in an activity at the middle school level, just like we do at the high school level. And at the high school level, we actually have, the Activity Fair is going to happen next, is it next Wednesday? The 14th, next Tuesday, the Activity Fair will happen.
All right, so it's clear to people, I mean...
That's a good point.
...it's a drama fee, it's a drama fee.
No, 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 it's an activity fee. It's an activity, we will clarify that.
Okay.
That did go out tonight. I saw that that went out on the phone call tonight, but...
Yeah, I sent it out tonight. I mean, we don't, we don't want to charge anybody for...
Well, I mean, I'll totally eliminate these fees, and also, I, I heard Cummings School is having a $100...
Well, but you have to understand, Cummings School is the middle school. So, um, okay, so under Personnel, the, we have one appointment right now that I'm, I have, I know we've made a couple, but I don't have, David Tracy is the assistant soccer coach. Uh, there were no resignations, no retirements, postings from the last meeting, we did have a boys' assistant soccer coach, a freshman assistant football coach, oral director for the sixth grade, sixth and seventh, intermural coordinator for fourth through seven, those are stipend positions, and then the office aide position at the, um, the position that we had had here that we've brought down to the, uh, main office. That's all I have for Personnel.
Okay, uh, financial and business procedures. Uh, we have a warrant this evening for $143,660.35. It's warrant number SVW-15-5. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next, we have a, uh, a motion, I need a motion for a transfer, uh, for the AT Cummings School for $1,600, science books and math books. Can I get a, uh, motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, I don't see any requests for buildings and grounds, unless something's coming late?
No. Buildings and grounds...
No, no buildings and grounds, I'm sorry. I just didn't know, there's a payroll motion, too, payroll warrant, if you could do that one, for 133,430.
133,130.
I don't have that in my packet.
Uh, actually, it should be, I'm sorry, let me just, it would be the one right after the warrant. It'd be the one that starts with the Superintendent of Schools.
Okay. I need a motion...
This one right here.
For the payroll warrants in the amount of $133,130. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, no, there is no buildings and grounds.
Okay.
I think that's a first time ever.
First time.
And unfinished business, I think we have mandatory background checks. Is there anything new on that, Mr. Superintendent?
No, we are going to, um, imply to see when they would like to come out to here, but I just, when I know that we wanted to have another meeting on that, just to talk about how the procedure would go on that, before we brought them out here.
We'll schedule another, uh, policy Subcommittee meeting and get back to the, uh, the main body. Uh, new business, Shore Education Collaborative?
This was, uh, Mr. Scarmel had placed it on there. Uh, I believe he needed a vote for the Articles of Agreement.
Right.
And, um, because it's, Shore needs all the districts, I don't know, Ms...
Yes. Um, Shore needs all of the districts to vote on the Articles of Agreement, and pretty basically, there has not been that much of a change from last year to this year. And, um, we can put on the website any of that whole entire agreement, and we just need, every school district needs to, they need a vote of, um, on, a yes vote on agreement to those changes, and on the article, every year, every year that those terms of agreement are there. So, um, we need to, um, have an, um...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Scarmel did not see any issue with this, uh, at the agenda, but, you know, whether or not you want to take a vote on it now, or wait till the 20th, that's up to you.
Is there a problem with tabling it till the 20th, so that Mr. Scarmel can be here for that? I'd like an opportunity to read it as well.
Yes, and that's fine.
Okay, acceptance of a $10,000 donation to the school department?
Yes, if you could, we got, we got a donation for $10,000, uh, back, uh, to, uh, in September, at the beginning of the year, uh, for money to be used for technology purposes, and, and just, it would be nice if I could get a, uh, an approval to accept that gift.
And where did that come from?
That came, that, that gift, uh, came from Mr. Cash.
Excellent. Just want to remind everyone where that, uh, those funds came from. Can I get a motion to accept the, uh, $10,000 donation to the school department for technology purposes? A motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to public comment. Anyone here who'd like to be heard?
Public comment?
Okay. Moving on to public relations. Sullivan?
I'll just remind people that it's Walk to School Day this week on Wednesday, and, um, I, I believe all the schools are participating this year. Um, I know most about the Gorman Fort Worth Bank School. Because of the two different start times, um, I didn't, uh, plan, you know, everybody should meet at this parking lot at 7:40, because depending on what grade you are, it depends on what time you have to be at school, so just encouraging families to get together with your child's friends, parents, um, and plan a meeting time about 15, 20 minutes before school starts. And this is our fourth year of doing Walk to School Day, and it's always been a beautiful sunny fall day, and it's always been a big hit, and the kids love it, they just think it's hysterical to walk to school, and it's a good opportunity, I know, Mr. Mail, I, it's a good opportunity for parents and families to see how easy it is to walk to school. And, um, so I just encourage everyone to participate who is able to, and the bus will continue to run on the bus's schedule.
Yes.
So no worries about that. And I do know that the, um, Cummings School and the high school are also participating in some way, but my liaison to those schools, um, I haven't spoken to, and so I'm not sure exactly how, but we'll try to maybe do a connected, Mr. Mosero, and, um, put something else also on the homepage and Facebook for people to get details. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Holden?
I just want to thank the iPad crew, Ms. Bellistock, Mr. Mosero for making this happen. I believe you're right, because, uh, felt respected, and I think, uh, will get great use out of it, so, that's it, thank you.
Ms. Shaki?
No.
Okay. Motion for adjournment?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
That concludes our meeting.